You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Okay, we'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for July 16th, 2025 to order. Item one, to consider and if appropriate, approve the minutes from July 2nd, 2025.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any errors, omissions, corrections? Hearing on all in favor, say aye. Aye. Item passes. Item two, can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending tax appeals? We'll invite in Attorney Perito with us.
Motion to go into executive session.
All right, second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Can I get a motion to go back into regular session?
Make a motion to go back to regular session.
All right, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. For the record, no votes were taken while in the executive session. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed settlements for 137 Stony Creek Road, 219 Damascus Road, and 101 Stony Creek Road?
Motion to approve.
All right, I'll second that. Any discussion, hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Get a motion to approve the proposed settlements for 16 and 17 Marina Village, Good Cell Point Road.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion, hearing on all in favor, say aye. Aye. Item passes. Thank you, thank you, Attorney. Item three, Inland Wetlands Commission appointment, Rachel Mersky, term due to expire May 31st, 2028. This is a correction from the June 4th, 2025 Board of Selectmen approval. This reappointment was approved as an alternate and should have been a regular member.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, I'll second that. Any discussion, hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item passes. Item four, reappointments, Housing Authority, Nadeem Adat, term due to expire April 30th, 2030.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion, hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item passes. Item five, correspondence, do not believe we have any. Item six, any other business? Any other, yeah, please.
Hi, I'm Lisa Waterman, the RTM member, District One. And I've come to kind of get some clarification and questions about the recent requests for proposals on the redevelopment of 111 Main Street and 11 Cherry Hill Road. So I'm aware, like, from reading through the requests for proposals, that ultimately this will come before the RTM for approval of the land, selling of the land. And so I just wanted to kind of come and get a better sense of the process. There's questions that kind of come up through this, so that we in the RTM can be more prepared for this process. And so, so one question that I had, that on the first page of the introduction, project teams are invited to submit their qualifications for consideration by evaluation, by evaluation team comprised of representatives of the town. So I kind of, one question I've had is, what, what kind of evaluation team will there be? How many people who will be appointed to, how will the process happen?
Yeah, so the final team or makeup of the team has not been finalized. I've been working, this RFQ, RFP was initially drafted through our planning office, through our town planner. As you know, they, was issued, the submission dates are required for, I think, September 15th, 2025. Prior to that, we will formalize the committee that is made up of various representatives from the town.
Can you be more specific on who will be on this?
No, because I haven't finalized that yet. So it'll be probably, you know, myself, members from planning, economic development, various stakeholder groups of the town.
And will that include a representative from the RTM?
Possibly. Like I said, I have not finalized who the final stakeholder group will be.
And so, and so will these proposals then, will there be public hearings? Will there, like, how will these proposals be vetted within the community?
So.
Because I'm sure people will have kind of strong feelings about how these historic buildings will be, will be used.
Yeah, depending, I think really we want to, this is like, we just initially casted, you know, a broad net, right? To see kind of what is the opportunity that may exist with these parcels. These are buildings that have been vacant for a number of years. The Canoe Brook has been being utilized as swing space, which it currently is. It's important to note that really nothing in this, through this process is binding the town to moving forward with any proposal. It's really, you know, to kind of see what, what type of interest there is from, and hopefully attract some, you know, well-qualified developers to kind of show what their vision is and that aligns with the town's plan of conservation and development to kind of repurpose these buildings. I think, you know, as far as the, the process, which I said, as far as the committee, the stakeholders, and there is a scoring criteria that is outlined, but also, I think, you know, in terms of the committee itself on, to finalize that shortlist, that is kind of yet to be determined.
I think just a percentage, it doesn't actually have very stringent criteria about how these will be.
Well, that's required as part of the RFQ process, to have it stated what the weighting will be. But as far as the process, as what I was just saying, as far as the membership of the committee, the reviewing team, and how we ultimately select to make a recommendation, which, you know, again, as you noted at the beginning of your questions, not only goes the RTM, but will also go to the Board of Selectmen. And beside even just the regulatory process, but just the, in terms of planning and zoning for an H24 refro is a requirement. So there are a number of meetings that are public meetings and allow public comment. And so this body, the RTM, which you are a member of, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission, will ultimately be part of the process before even moving to the second phase of that, that process.
But the first phase is really the selection, that will be selected before planning, I mean, my understanding is it will be before any planning and zoning or any, will there be public, public conversation before the selection?
And again, that's why I said, when we have the selection committee, various stakeholders, and based on, you know, what kind of response we'll have, will kind of, I think we'll determine, you know, how that, that shortlist is created.
Then, so as part of this, the development goals should be kind of contributing the goals of the POCD, but according to the town charter, like, it says land's supposed to be sold basically to the highest bidder. So how will those things be reconciled?
Well, you're referencing that, not the charter, the town code?
The town code.
And actually, if you go, I think that's 73-1 you might be citing, or if you go to 73-2, it clearly states that the Board of Selectmen, this body, may waive those bid requirements in the best interest of the town. So I, you know, that is, that is in our town code. I would argue that without going through this process, how would you know what is in the best interest of the town? So that's why I see this as the first step in a long step. And as you probably read through the RFQ, this is easily an 18-month to two-year process. It's a lengthy process, there's a, you know, and, you know, due diligence that is done, you know, not only on the town's part, but also the developer's part.
But, I mean, but according to this, there's, again, it is a long process.
Did I answer your question regarding, because, so you agree that we're not in conflict with town code? Because no land has, has transferred nor been sold, and that decision would come later.
Yes, so, but I mean, but it's still then justifying if it is not the highest bid? I mean, you're saying that it can be overruled by?
Well, 73, that 73-1 is what you're referencing.
Yes.
Read 73-2, that says the bid requirements, you know, may be waived if the Board of Selectmen unanimously votes deemed in the best interest.
Can waive that? Okay.
Right, so therefore that would not have to necessarily go to the highest bidder, it's what is in the best interest. If we were to just go out and straight, you know, market these properties or, or sell these properties, as was, just put them on, you know, we would have to go through a bid process where we'd just solely go to the highest bidder. But I don't think, you know, this is, I think we should really look at, you know, what is in the, you know, the future of those properties? And is, is it, we are currently in control. Before we divest of these properties, we want to have some reassurance of how they'll be repurposed and reused. So it is in the best interest of the town.
And then why?
Beyond just, beyond just a one-time monetary hit, you know, or gain, it should be, I think, redevelopment that really contributes to the quality of life in town, the vibrancy of town, the, the overall economy of town.
So why now? Why were the, why is this bid put out now for buildings that have been in town ownership for, you know, a century and they've been empty for a really long time? So why, why now?
Well, okay, the, well, you say a really long time. As I said, Canoe Brook has been utilized for the last several years as swing space, both for the animal shelter and is currently being utilized for the police station project. We expect that'll be completed over the wintertime and that the use will no longer there. So there was a purpose, a use for the Canoe Brook at that time. I think the Post Office bill and the Board of Ed for the last couple of years has been, since they relocated Central Office to the Walsh Intermediate School, has been vacant. So really, it's what is the process to kind of evaluate what is the future of that parcel? And again, there's different ideas how to approach this. Some are just sell it, some are just hold on to it, you know, hear from people. I think we should see what is the potential. The town needs to understand what is the potential of repurposing that site. So that's where, you know, in talking with the town planner, who's, you know, has experience in kind of going through these types of processes, and my conversation with him, and we elected to now move forward on kind of seeing what is the potential.
And so, so it's kind of a trial balloon, it sounds like, to see?
It's not, I mean, we're, we want to, certainly, we expect that, you know, those who are responding, and that's why there's even a good faith deposit that has to be part, that these are, you know, qualified developers who have, you know, the means and the experience, and that's what you can see that's laid out in the RFQ, that they have to have the means and the experience, the history of, of completing projects. And, you know, so I wouldn't say it's just a, a trial balloon, but I think we're hoping to, as I said at the beginning, cast a broad net to kind of see, there may be some, some use that we're not, have contemplated. There may be something that, you know, you know, to kind of, you know, come forward and have those buildings repurposed in a manner that we have not considered yet or thought of. So I don't think it's a trial balloon, I think it's really kind of, you know, seeing what are true opportunities. And we really have opportunities to repurpose these two parcels in a very productive way. And this is the first step in doing that. And just, you know, as far as, like I said, nothing is, by this solely issuing this solicitation and receiving respondents, doesn't bind, bind the town to, to accept one as if, you know, or to select one just solely on because they were the highest bidder. We want to surely, you know, have this vetted approach to ensure that it does, you know, kind of contribute to the town.
Are the, the timing seems pretty aggressive, that basically to have a selected project team one month after the, the proposals are due? Is that fairly aggressive?
Um, you're saying from the response to having one selected?
Yeah, so it's a selected project team notified or about?
Again, I think there's even language in there that says, I mean, that was kind of a guiding document, if needed, if we had it to move those, we could, but I think we also wanted to kind of put a framework in, so that we would try to hit these certain milestones. But if, you know, if for some reason, you know, whether it's, it's, you know, meetings or, you know, groups or final decision isn't made, but that hard, that's not a hard date, but it's more of the milestones that we hope to hit.
So if there's a project teams, like, so say there's, say 10 proposals, a project team is selected by this committee, and then they start going through a process, I mean, and then it will have to be going straight through planning and zoning through all of the processes?
Well, once the project team, yeah, I mean, you, you, once, say there's a project that is selected, right? A project team that is selected to advance. Again, one of the, you'll see that phase, I think it's phase two, or, you know, after, you know, that's really where they're doing their due diligence and spending some real dollars in terms of what can be done, in terms of, you know, design and engineering costs. But prior to that is, there would be a vote by the Board of Selectmen, there'd be a vote by planning of review and recommendation, that's the H24 review, that's a statutory requirement by planning and zoning for their favor, for their review. And then it would go to the RTM, which then the RTM, because of that 70.
The land use.
The land use disposition of town land, if we were to transfer or encumber any land requires RTM approval, it would go to the RTM for that, to have that, because?
Before October 15th, all of that?
No, no, after the October 15th. Once, October 15th is the milestone to have a, a plan that is, a project that is selected, selected by the, the team that is reviewing.
A committee.
The committee. But it still needs to go through all the regulatory process and, and, and the legal process, which includes Board of Selectmen, planning and zoning. This is all after the October 15th date. And finally, RTM. The RTM is required to take action because before, any team I would expect expends significant dollars, they want to have that action by the RTM that they are supportive or approve of the transfer or the sale of, of property.
And so what happens then if there's a team selected and it does not make it, you know, through some of these regulatory boards, there are voted against it? Will there be backups? Will there be other options?
Yeah, I think, well, it states even that there's a shortlist, so I think if, if something, you know, should, it doesn't prevent the town from going in another direction.
And so, so that there will be, so even though someone doesn't make it through the first round, they may make it later if the first choice doesn't go through.
Well, if, if, for some, whatever reason, the development team no longer finds the project feasible, or if there's some, I'm just, you know, something that has changed from their original concept that we don't feel is in our best interest, we, you know, the, both, both parties can, can, you know, elect to not proceed any longer.
And so then, so maybe I would just ask as consideration for the team, obviously the other stakeholders are for Selectmen and planning and zoning, so there, it sounds like they're definitely going to be represented on the, on the team. So it'd be great for there to be RTM representation on the team, also as a stakeholder that will ultimately need to, to approve it. And then will those meetings of that team be public?
The, they'll be, I will just, they'll have to be noticed in public. I think at some of, initially, because of what is required, I just have to confirm some of the information that initially, will maybe private, you know, not, not public information, if we're getting, so I think, but certainly when they go to select and make their, make their decision, that would be a public process. But, but the initial, the initial responses may, there may be, depending, I'll just have to confirm with both the attorney and planner, there may be some information that comes in initially that might be confidential.
You'd be good to understand, you know, what the, I mean, it's clearly, is there some criteria, like what criteria, what were, what were, what were considered, why, what was the process? So I think that would be great. Okay.
Well, and again, I think you're going to find, it's going to be a very public, and though you're raising some good questions, and I appreciate them, I think at the end of the day, it's going to be a transparent process in terms of how this ultimately, what comes forward. I mean, we've, the town has been presented with projects and proposals in the past where, you know, that have, you know, through, you know, both, that may include private development or transfers that, you know, did not go through a process, so, such as this. And that's why we laid out this, and this is issued to the public, and it's publicly noticed and, and the process. So when it does come forward to these meetings, that I mentioned, Board of Selectmen, Planning and Zoning, and RTM, there's a, you know, a process that we can state that we follow to get to this decision.
But then it doesn't, again, like, one of the important parts is, is this committee? And it doesn't say specifically when the committee will be appointed and what the, you know, like, the committee?
Yeah, well, that's not, that's not necessarily, I don't think, Jermaine, for the, for the, this is what was issued out to?
Yes.
The respondents, they're not, well, when is the committee? That's not something that you would typically find in a RFQ, RFP.
Yes, yes, but, well, but in thinking about, like, you're seeing that this document is used as the public notification that this is happening and that these properties are being, and, and kind of what the process is and the process for approval through, you know, the, the town bodies. So I'd say from the transparency around the process, it would be awesome to understand better, you know, again, the committee, the committee makeup have some way of knowing who, you know, that is and in preparation. So I know as a purely new member of the RTM, it's good to kind of be ahead of what things will come to us, so that we have the opportunity to be part of the process, involved in the process, and, and kind of ask our questions and understand, you know, as, as part of this process.
Am I correct, from what I heard tonight, because I think this is new to everybody, as you know?
Yeah.
Based on the timeline that I heard this evening, I believe that this board, as it sits now, and the RTM as it sits now, is going to be different by the time this goes to them. So there may be different, there will be, I'm guessing, now I hear in this, different members will be getting on there, whoever the Selectmen should be, and different RTM members. So I think, I think this is going to be like a living document, to some extent, this committee, where it's going to be rapidly changing. And I didn't know that until tonight either.
Right, and that's, you know, a good point, because that was something that came up in the discussion about the timing of releasing this. And, you know, it will not be the current makeup of the Board of Selectmen that ultimately, it will not be, well, it may come to us prior, you know, there may be an action, but for the RTM, which requires that, kind of that last step that was there, that will be the next RTM.
That will be.
Because the timing just won't work. As you know, October, mid-October is going to be your, your last regular scheduled meeting. And I don't think that something like this would be, I wouldn't, and I wouldn't advocate to kind of push to have it rushed through or acted on as a group coming, going out. I think this is something, as I said, this is a, this is a process that's going to take several months, if not, you know, you know, ultimately, up to a year and a half to two years to really, from, from start to kind of finish.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate your feedback.
Yep.
Thanks.
When this takes place, is this going to interfere with the central revitalization?
Are you talking about the Main Street?
Yeah, the Main Street, yeah.
No.
Why wouldn't it? There, that building is right on the corner of Monowee Street and Main Street.
Yeah, I mean.
At least the old Post Office slash Board of Ed building is.
Right.
Now, I can see maybe the old Canoe Brook School maybe not involved in that, but I would think that there would be some impact in the center of town. If, if a developer buys this, he's not going to wait until the central, I mean, until the revitalization in the center of town is done, I wouldn't think. So he's going to have some impact now? Has that been even thought about?
Well, because I, I think your schedule is, is off. Unfortunately, as you know, the revitalization has not started, but.
Yeah, right.
But, but it's slated to start. I think that, that project in the road reconstruction that'll take place, and the sidewalk reconstruction that's going to take place, will, will be in advance of any ultimate transfer of this project.
Well, we don't have any insurances of that. I mean, this is supposed to have taken place this summer in the day.
Yeah, but I, I don't know, so, well, okay.
No, I'm just saying that I think that, that should be part of the consideration, is that there may be more impact to this than just looking at it from a point of view of, well, that's a project, and this is a project, and they're not going to have any impact in either one of them.
Because they could have an effect on each other, possibly, because of the timing or use, I don't know.
Well, anyways, just, just, just the thought process.
I, certainly how those, whatever the reuse of that building and how that comes out through and, and, you know, kind of, whether there's a change in circulation and pedestrian circulation, you know, we wouldn't, wouldn't know, but we're not moving Main Street, we're not moving Monowee's, there may be activity that has to, but that's common for any, any work that may be done. That'd be even for a building that's not town-owned, you know? We know there may be some.
But you know how much fun a traffic flow is even now in the center of town? So, and every day, and every day, it's a different, it's a different workaround.
Yep.
And so you're going to double that, or at least you're going to have another project and a more major project working on that. So I'm just saying, that's something, something that should be considered. You speak of stakeholders, who are the stakeholders here?
As I said, they're yet, all completely, the committee isn't fully defined yet in terms of who the stakeholders are, but when I consider.
And are you, are you the one that is?
When I consider stakeholders, I would say that we probably want to have somebody who's representing just the community, people of community at large, the business community, you know, the, you know, we have possibly, you know, historical society. I mean, there's, there's a group of people that currently sit not only on various boards and commissions, which you could argue are all stakeholder groups, but I think the community at large needs to be represented as well. So, so as far as the exact membership and numbers, that has not been fully, fully defined at this point, admittedly. But, but again, the stakeholders are, you know, like I said, touch upon those groups that I just mentioned.
Well, I'll make a suggestion.
Sure.
I think that you should have an architect involved in this, because we have some terrific architects in town, and they should be involved in this, since both of those buildings are historic buildings, and even though the historical society can give us some great background on the significance of those buildings, architecturally, it's always nice to have that extra information. And like I say, we have tremendous architects in town. What, what is the status of Public Works? At the end of this month, that lease is up, right? So where is Public Works going now?
That is under negotiations as we speak, both in terms of, there will probably be a temporary, there will be a temporary location.
And where's that?
And, no, it's under negotiations, so.
So there's a little lack of transparency. You, you got, you know, you got basically two weeks.
I'm, I'm aware of the time that we have.
Okay.
And I've been talking to both property owners and, and for both, representatives from both buildings, so I'm, I'm fully aware of the, the time allotment.
Well, I'm not so sure.
And we're looking at a couple, a couple buildings in terms of, for a temporary location, and we're also looking for a permanent, our, a home for Public Works.
Well, one of your campaign platform items back when you first ran was the, that you were going to do something to get a permanent place for Public Works. were going to do something to get a permanent place for Public Works. And there was a complaint because Unc De Ross wanted to do it in the Tabor area, and the Republicans had a big uproar about it. No, we can't do it there, it's not a good place, dah dah dah, we're going to find a place. Well, here we are, over a decade later, and you say, well, I'm looking for a place. Ah, you know, that, that doesn't give you, it doesn't give the public a lot of confidence.
Well, to that point, I will go on the record once again and say, I would not support Public Works going down to the Tabor site.
I know, but you won't support any place right now because you won't give us a place.
No, that's not, yeah.
And, and the public doesn't know where this is going to be done.
You asked a question, can I finish?
Yeah, okay. I'm responding to his comment, you said that...
Yeah, but let me, you...
Okay, go ahead.
Please, I'm not going to belabor this, because, and as I said many times, in many meetings since then, you are correct. One of the things we wanted to look for was a, a permanent home. I was actually, when, when Public Works, we were first entering a lease agreement at the current location, I, it was on the floor of the R T M, and I stated, you know what? I had concerns without having a, a, a plan, that we would end up staying there much longer than we anticipated, and, and wouldn't have a plan. And I was skeptical of the lease arrangement. I will say, in, in terms of, and, and I give, I've stated this, as far as, for this past fifteen years that they've been there, the, the Public Works Department has, has made it work. It was a favorable arrangement to the town in terms of the cost of it, and, and under those past fifteen years, particularly the last several years, few years, I think the, the department has truly expanded in what they've, they've done and, and, and what they do. Certainly, the, as you know, or those, you know, in town, the town has undertaken many projects and, over this past twelve years since taking office. You know, in, in doing it, as I said, that arrangement, was it, was it an ideal location? No. I, I think you're going to be hard pressed to find an ideal location. Did, did the department make it work? Yes. Was it, was it financially, was it a, a good deal for the town? Did we, was it financially advantageous for the town for that period? Absolutely. And it allowed us to do a lot of other things in, in this town over that period of time. I, now we find ourselves in a situation where we were under the impression, or discussions, we were having discussions with, kind of entering into a long-term agreement with our current location. We were then notified this past spring that they were no longer going to pursue a long-term agreement, they had an other opportunity that they felt was in their best interest with the other tenant that is in the building. I recognize, you know, why they made that decision. That is when we started to look for both, a, initially, what could be the permanent location for Department of Public Works, as times, by we said, we realized we'd also have to look for a temporary location, but as I've said to others, and I'll state again on the record, my plan is to come forward with both the, not only the temporary, but also give what the final location should be, or the permanent home of Department of Public Works. Because I don't want the next administration to, or the town, to fall in the same, you know, spot that we are currently. So that's why I'm doing everything I can at this moment to ensure, as again, I'm not looking just for a temporary location, I'm going to solve that issue, but more, what is the permanent location? And that will come forward, as stated in the last month.
Okay, so you've had twelve years to find that ideal situation, which you said didn't exist fifteen years ago, but now it's going to exist, I guess.
No, I, I...
Now, wait a second, let me finish. So, so you're, you are now afraid of passing this off to somebody else, and you had twelve years in which to do something about this, and you didn't. It's all great until it isn't great, and now it isn't great. And all of a sudden, now we're caught scrambling, and I, I've asked you about this, the Public Works Garage, at least for the last two to three years, at least, and you've always blown it off as always, and, and you've just done that. And now, when it comes forward, you're trying to scramble saying this, and it just seems to me, it's a lack of planning here, and it's a lack of foresight, and, and that type of lack of foresight worries me about this whole thing with the central redevelopment in the Main Street and these, these two new projects here. This foresight, I think, is, you mentioned that you want to diverse, divest of this, of these two properties, and I'm thinking, maybe we should keep these properties and, and reuse them, because there's plenty of things we can reuse them for. That discussion should be at least had, and I'm not sure it will be, not under your administration anyway.
Yeah, well, I, I'm only here till November, so clearly it won't happen.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, you clearly didn't underst, either you're intentionally, or you didn't catch what I had said, because in your spots, and that's why I apologize for going to interrupt, because you misstated what I had said. But I think we'll just end it there, unless you have more to say. But as I, I stated, for those who were paying attention, you know, the, the last twelve years was, you know, was the, the building, the department in terms of Public Works made it work, we were in talks to do a long-term agreement, I stated that, so it wasn't as if nothing was being considered, the, the surprise came at the end of this. And we'll, we'll address the issue, so I'm not that concerned. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Like I say, though, it, it works until, it works until it doesn't, you know?
Yeah, that's typically happened, yeah.
Based, based on the rumors that are all over the world about some of the projects, and I, I can't, can't say it here, but what would the process be if we decided to, if you should decide, go forward and say, say, purchase a piece of property, just so everyone knows? Am I right that you would first go to the Board of Finance, and then, I don't know if it comes to us first or whatever discussed, but probably just goes to the Board of Finance, and then would make its way to the R T M?
Correct.
So that, that's a timeline that we're working on right now, before we close out?
Correct, yeah.
Is that for the...
Public Works, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that's going to be coming rapidly, at any pace.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second, I, I, thanks.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.